Go, Michael. Roll call Denise?
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Morrow.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ponce.
Here.
And Mayor Kennedy.
Here. Do you have any announcements or written communication, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. City staff at this time is recommending that we pull item number 11, the repeal of the annual growth policy. We have received a number of inquiries and questions on this item. We would like to come back with a more detailed staff report, including some background as to how and why that was initially implemented and some of the safeguards that are in place today at a January 2014 meeting, if that is acceptable.
That'd be awesome.
Okay.
Okay, closed session.
We have conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. This is Hermosa Hotel versus the City of Avalon, and another existing litigation. It's in the matter of the K through 12 school site at 200 Falls Canyon Road.
We'll be back. Okay, announcements, council?
Yeah, I'd like to just want to recognize Tony Zeller. And I don't know if any of you have noticed that he, how much sweeping he's been doing around town, but I don't know if anybody's said anything, but I would just like to thank him for going around and doing all the sweeping around the city, and he does a pretty good job of it. So again, thanks, Tony Zeller, for doing all the sweeping around town.
Good boy, Tony. Michael?
I have a few just reminders. Shop at Home this Saturday from nine, from five to nine down on Front Street. The different businesses will be open. Christmas tree pickup this Saturday at nine o'clock at the Old Stables. If you have not ordered and paid for your tree, you can still come down at 10 o'clock, and it's on a first-come, first-served basis. And then the ladies' Christmas brunch Saturday morning, tickets still available, and that will be at Tremont Hall at 10 o'clock. And you would contact Judy Hibbs, but I don't have her number, so just give a call to City Hall, and they could probably help you out with that.
Thank you, Michael. Ollie?
The annual Avalon Lions Holiday Raffle started, so beware when you go through the post office arcade, somebody's going to try to get you to buy tickets. We have $2,500 worth of prizes. The raffle takes place on December 31st at 1:00, and all the proceeds go to the Thanksgiving and Christmas food baskets that are distributed in Avalon.
Thanks, Ollie. Anything wrong?
I'm good.
Okay, presentations.
Yes, we have one presentation this evening. We have Christine Guerrero from the League of California Cities, who will provide an overview of the league's services to municipalities. I believe that you should have a hard copy of Christine's presentation to follow along. Christine, please take it away.
Sure, and I think we're gonna put it up on the... Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to thank you for having me here. I'm a couple weeks late, but I did make it. My name is Christine Guerrero. I am with the League of California Cities, and I am based in LA County, but our main offices are in Sacramento. And I'm here to talk to you a little bit about what the league is. Most of you already know that I know there's some new council members. I wanted to give an orientation for you and for the community at large. I think it's really important to know that outside of the city borders, there's a lot of things that go on that the City of Avalon is involved in. Who, I wanted to just give you a brief overview of who the League of Cities is. I know that the City of Avalon is over, just celebrating its 100 years. Happy birthday. And the league is about a 115-year, or year-old organization. We represent 480 cities in the state. That's over 30 million Californians. So there are about 39 million people living in this state, and 30 million of those people live in cities. We represent mayors, council members, and city staff. So you're, from your city manager to your finance directors, to your city clerks, the league represents and provides services to both elected members and city staff. We also are divided into 16 regional divisions, and Avalon is in the Los Angeles County Division. We are, there are so many cities in the state that we are organized so that we can advocate on more local issues. So we advocate also not only for the 480 cities and those kind of macro issues, but we also kind of go down to the county levels and see what kind of issues, issues that are relatable to cities in the 88 cities in the county. Our mission, our mission is to expand and protect local control for cities through education and advocacy to enhance quality of life for all of Californians. And what does that mean? Local control is kind of at the heart of what we do in cities. We get a lot of state mandates and federal mandates that kind of say how cities should operate. And what we do at the league is try to provide the flexibility so that cities have local control in these general policy areas, so that if the state says there are land use policies that we need to follow for 480 cities, we can say, wait a minute, Avalon is a lot different than, say, the City of Long Beach, and we have to have that flexibility to make communities unique. So local control is really what makes every community unique. Certainly in the City of Avalon, things are a lot different than other cities. So land use, public safety, environmental quality is another big one. We want to make sure that there's flexibility for cities, and that's what we advocate for. What is, what does the league do? I mentioned a few things, but these are kind of the general kind of issue areas and functions that we have at the league. We are an advocacy group, so we look, every legislative year, we look at thousands of bills to see what relates to cities, how it's going to impact local governments, whether that's in a good way or in a bad way. We try to make sure that there's the best outcome for cities when things are going through the legislative process. We also have legal advocacy. I know Scott Campbell is really involved in the league's legal advocacy program. This involves challenging either ballot measures, state legislation, or even writing amicus briefs for cities that have lawsuits going forward against either the state or other issues. We also do ballot measures. I know some of you have been pretty active on your private time in supporting ballot measures that affect local governments and protect local control and local funding. That's another big issue for us. We want to make sure that cities keep their revenues that come from local residents. We want to make sure that they stay in their cities, and that's a lot of what we do at the league also. We provide professional development and education programs. This is for both mayors and council members. I know I've seen a couple of you at our league conferences, and I encourage you to, all of you, to attend them as much as you can. And also for city staff, we have a city managers' conference. We provide professional development. We have something for city clerks, city attorneys. We have a lot of informational resources. If you look at our website, we provide policy training, best practices for council members, ethics trainings, and also budget information. So if you're a community member and you want to see how to read a city budget, we have that information on our website, and I'll get to the website at the end of the presentation. Some of the key milestones that we've reached at the league, particularly in the last 10 years, have been our ballot measures that we have won. And we've had tremendous, these are statewide ballot measures, and they have received overwhelming support for local governments to keep local revenues local, as I said before. And we passed Proposition 1A in 2004, and in 2010, just recently, we passed Prop 22, and that was meant to secure your funding sources so that you can keep your budgets balanced and provide services that you've been providing to the community. I wanted to go over what we've kind of seen in this legislative year. We've had a lot of new legislative members. We have, of course, a very strong governor, and I kind of just wanted to go over what we've seen and what we haven't seen that we had seen in the past. So just to back up a little bit, for those of you who have been on council for a while and know the battles that local governments have had with the state, those, for now, are in the past. But nevertheless, it hasn't been just, it hasn't been the most promising time for local governments. In 2012, so just about a year ago, we were coming out of a very difficult economy. Since 2008, cities were really struggling to balance their budgets, not only because we had lower tax revenues, but in general, the economy was taking a downturn. We saw a lot of local bankruptcies as a result of that, some of them because of poor management, but some of them just because of the economy and declining revenues. We saw a chronic state budget deficit, and this resulted in borrowing from local governments, a lot of your tax base, and the dissolution of redevelopment that we saw in 2010, which you're very well aware of, and have been dealing with the aftermath of the redevelopment dissolution. So you're dealings with the Department of Finance, I know that's fun, and what your Oversight Board and Successor Agency has to deal with now in unwinding redevelopment. So that's what we dealt with in 2012. 2013, we saw a lot of changes, which have kind of changed the political climate in Sacramento and the relationships between the state and local government. First, we've seen 39 freshman legislators come in. This is the largest new class of legislators that we've seen in probably, probably in the state's history. These are legislators who have come in under different circumstances than our old legislators. So they can now serve up to 12 years in the legislature, whereas before they could only, in one house, before they could only spend six years in the Assembly or eight years in the Senate. So our legislators were constantly looking for their new office. So if you're elected to the Assembly, you need to figure out within those next two years if you're going to jump to the Senate or stay in the Assembly. We don't have that jumping around anymore. We have a lot of stability. So we have legislators looking for new offices. Those legislators were also elected under the top two primaries. So we have a system where we're electing theoretically more moderate legislators. Well, again, we'll see if that turns out to be true, but so far what we've seen, they're turning out fairly moderate. Redistricting, we've also seen citizen, citizen drawn districts. So I know that you guys are in a new Senate district than you were before. That's a result of new Senate districts, so you have different relationships with new legislators. We also have a super majority of control of both houses. So Democrats now control the legislature, making it a little bit easier for budgets to be passed and legislation to be passed. So we don't have that push and pull in the, in both houses. Another thing that's changed in the political climate is that the state has more new revenue, and that's because of Prop 30. You saw just a couple of weeks ago that the state is reporting that they are, they're about $9 billion in, in the plus right now on revenue sources. So that means that we're going to see, we won't see as much budget infighting between local governments and the state. And we also have a recovering economy. We have, again, as I mentioned before, majority vote budgets, and we also have, and I didn't mention this earlier, but a strong governor. So we have a lot of new legislators. We have a very politically savvy, savvy governor who's been able to get his agendas through, including the dissolution of redevelopment. That's kind of what we've seen. So we're looking to see some changes in how the legislature and the governor interact with each other. What's happened this year on legislation, we saw 400 bills related to local governments. A lot of them dealt with economic development, and that's because the legislature has been trying to make up for the poor decision of dismantling redevelopment. There is now no economic development tool in the state, so the legislature's been trying to figure out what do we do now to make the economy strong and to make cities strong. And there was a lot of, there was a lot of legislation that went through the legislature, a lot of willingness for to see either tax increment come back or some other form of economic development. Unfortunately, the governor had no intentions of signing any of that legislation. So any bills that did go to his desk on economic development were vetoed, or the legislature held them back because they weren't going to get signed. And we're in the middle of a two-year session, so we'll see if any of those bills go forward in January. We tried to get some legislation passed to streamline the redevelopment and dissolution process. So in that, maybe that's why Scott does, you know, he's been pulling out his hair on the dissolution process with the Department of Finance.
She's known me for 15 years, so she knew me when I got here.
We've been trying to get that resolved, but the governor didn't sign the legislation that would have given a finding of completion for cities. So once you had, you know, had the finding of completion with the Department of Finance, that would have said the Department of Finance can't come back and knock on your door and say, we want to look at something else. The governor doesn't, didn't sign that legislation, so fortunately, we don't have any of that certainty. The governor also eliminated enterprise zones, and I know that the City of Avalon doesn't have one, but Long Beach is about 75% enterprise zone. So that was the last remaining economic development tool in the state, and that is now gone. The governor unfortunately also borrowed cap and trade funds that were meant for local governments to use on energy efficiency and greenhouse gas reduction programs. We're hoping to see some of that money in the next couple of years for local governments, but again, we don't know. And so this all depends on our relationship with the governor and kind of what he's looking at for the next, assuming that he, that he runs for reelection, what we're going to look at with the governor in the next four years. Local government did get some money in public safety realignment. It wasn't a whole lot. Out of 480 cities in the state, we got about $27 million to share on public safety realignment. A lot of that money went to counties, so the Sheriff's Department, which covers the City of Avalon, has seen some of that money. But again, not quite enough for the systematic change of how realignment is working on public safety, on the public safety system. We also saw the erosion of voter-approved utility users taxes. And I know that the City of Avalon does not have, I don't believe you guys have one, but what's, what's concerning about legislation that exempts certain industries from a voter-approved tax is that it can happen in other areas also. So if you rely, if your city relies on, say, a hotel tax, you know, that opens the door for the legislature to come in and say, we can make exemptions there. So something to be vigilant about. It's something that we definitely advocate to protect at the league, but, you know, we do that with the help of, with our, our city staff and with our elected officials in talking to our legislators about the importance of keeping revenue local. What's to come in 2014? Just a little synopsis on what we'll be working on and asking you to help us work on next year is, some of the dynamics that are going on is it's an election year, so the governor may be running for reelection. You also probably going to have, you will have a new Assembly member in, in the fall. As Assembly Member Lowenthal is termed out, we'll see new legislative leadership, so that may change a lot of our relationships with the legislature and how we're able to work with the political dynamics in Sacramento. So we'll have a new Speaker of the Assembly and a new President Protem of the Senate. Some of the issues that we think, we believe what we would, we will be working on at cities, and which will be pretty important to us, are first, the water bond. As I see your banner here on being water-wise, there are proposals to put a statewide water bond. I believe it's about $6 billion, $6 billion now. What we're looking at in local governments is money for our MS4 permits and stormwater funding. As you know, that's a, it's a big, it's a huge cost for cities that it's coming up, that are coming up in the next year. And we're looking for, it's unfunded also. So we're looking for mechanisms to help fund your requirements for stormwater funding. I'm sorry, to meet your MS4 requirements. So we're looking to advocate for that funding in the 2014 water bond if it comes up. We also think we'll see more pension reform proposals. There are a few mayors, the league is not quite supporting, the league is not supporting those measures, but there are a few mayors out there that are looking for stronger pension reform, and I believe there may be a ballot measure in 2014 also, something that you'll probably have to consider as elected officials, whether or not you choose to get involved in something like that. We are also seeing a big call for medical marijuana regulations, and I, we're seeing a lot of dispensaries kind of usurping local government control, and also the state coming in and telling cities when they can and can't have medical marijuana dispensaries. Again, that's a local choice, but we're starting to see a lot of, a lot of intrusion for local governments on that, something that we'll be working on this year. And just an overall protection of general local control policy. We've seen some disturbing legislation that impacts charter cities. I know you're a general law city, but when it affects a charter city, it's kind of creates their own constitution. It's probably going to have kind of mini-constitution. It's going to have effects on general law cities. So it's just things that we need to stay vigilant on. In Los Angeles County, what we're going to be working on at the division level is we're going to be trying to streamline the city selection process. And I know Michael's nodding his head because this is our county appointments, and this requires every city in the county to come into a room and, and get a quorum, which, when you have 88 cities trying to travel by boat and across freeways that, that are clogged, it's really hard to get a quorum. So we're starting, trying to streamline that process. And these are appointments like AQMD and MTA and those types of important positions. We'll still be working on promoting economic development legislation and tools for local governments. And then again, as I mentioned, the 2014 water bond. And, you know, what I came here today to do is, one, to give you an overview of the legislative year, but just to encourage Avalon to stay involved. You've got a new city manager, and he's pretty popular on, in, in the Gateway Cities and the group.
I was trying to figure out where.
He's well-connected. He's well-connected over there, so I think he's going to bring, I know he brings a lot of, of expertise and also just connections to what's going on in the mainland and how to translate that into, to what's going on in Avalon. Michael's a great ambassador. He sits on our, some of our leadership committees at the league. But each of you is a member of the league, so I just want to encourage you to attend our meetings. Our annual conference will be in Los Angeles next September, so it's an easy boat ride over for you all. And also encourage your staff to attend our conferences that are designed for them, for them. So the City Clerks Conference, the City Managers Conference, which will be in Long Beach next, in February. We really encourage you to stay involved. So I've given you some information. I think it should be at the dais. I encourage you to stay involved in the league. Email us, contact us, look at our website. We're available. We're also available for the community to look at for resources on transparency, on how to read a budget, on just general kind of overviews of local government. So with that, I'll just entertain any questions, but I thank you for having me here tonight.
Any questions?
I'll be nice. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Christine.
That's it? Okay, thank you.
I, I just want to say, it is, it's, I've enjoyed being involved with the league. You learn a lot, and just getting to know other council people and knowing that you're not the only ones out there, that other people go through the same thing, so.
It used to be a lot more fun.
Oral communications. Anyone in the audience care to address the council for any item that is not on our agenda? You may now come forward. Jen?
Oh, jeez, who would have guessed?
Well, if you're going to come up, how come I had to make all the announcements?
Sucker. I just have one quick announcement, and it's that we're starting a new dance class in town. We have a couple who have great ties to the island, Rob and Carol Thomas. And Rob Thomas used to fly seaplanes to the island for Catalina Seaplane, and they just want to give back to the community. So they're holding, they're professional ballroom dancers. They're in Palos Verdes, and they teach ballroom dance full-time on the mainland for youth and adults. And they're going to be coming once a month to give free ballroom dance lessons to locals. It's high school and adult only at this time, and it's going to be on Monday nights. And the one for December, which will be their first one, is December 16th, so in two weeks, and it's from 7:30 to 9:30 at Tremont Hall. And it'll be a real festive atmosphere, so you'll learn three different types of dances, and then the second half of the class will be just actually dancing and having fun. So if you can't make it to this one, we'll have another one on, in January, but it'll be once a month for free. Come and have fun. December 16th.
Thank you, Jen. Anyone else? Okay, consent calendar.
Yes, Mayor, there are nine items on the consent calendar this evening. Actions from the November 19th meeting, a action for a smart classroom grant, a number of waterside permit modifications, and some waterside permit renewals, as well as an IT purchase.
Any member care to pull any item for further discussion that is on the consent calendar? Brian?
I believe it's item number four, six. I think four and six are the only ones right now that had applied for Lover's Cove. After talking with a couple of the applicants, I had recommended that they stay away from the southeast wall to give the glass-bottom boats a clear fairway to go by because it's a shallow area. But I'd like to have more discussions with the glass-bottom boats and these folks to make sure that everybody can use the area where when glass-bottom boats go by, they go in shallow and stay there, because some people can do that and other people don't. So if I can't make that stick as a rule with them working amongst themselves, then I'll bring it back to council to just make it dedicated to the area from the Lover's Cove stairs towards the Cabrillo Mall. But right now, I want to strike that excluding the, the southeast wall.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Okay, anyone else in the audience care to comment on the items on consent? I need to abstain from item number seven. So would any member care to entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
But if I do, we do item number seven first, and...
Okay.
So I make, I make a motion to approve item number seven.
Second.
Call for a vote?
Four ayes, one abstention. Mayor Kennedy.
I don't know that it was physically worth getting out of my chair.
Is that my 164?
Yeah, that was your 164 dollars that you got out of me.
And then I go ahead and make a motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, and nine.
Second. Call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
General business.
Yes, item number 10 is an ordinance, expanding the definition of temporary signs and establishing guidelines. Our planning director, Amanda Cook, is with us, and she will provide you with a brief staff report.
I think the motivation behind this is that, as you can see, a perfect example is what the museum sign has over there. It's their "Construction coming soon" type of signs. And we didn't have any language in the code that would provide for that type of temporary signage without the applicants having to go through a sign variance process. So we took some language to the planning commission to try to provide the opportunity for the city manager, myself, to approve those type of temporary signage, "coming soon," "opening soon" type of signage. I got a call this afternoon because we gave a copy of the proposed ordinance to the island company, and I think there's a typo in the ordinance. In the second paragraph of the proposed language, the first sentence says that the city manager or the planning director may determine the appropriate size of the temporary... or the planning director may determine the appropriate size of the temporary sign. But then in about the next to the last sentence in the second paragraph, it has the, "In no event shall the temporary sign exceed the allowed size." Is that in your copy, Scott?
Yeah.
That is, that "in no event" sentence was not in the language that the planning commission adopted. It's, it's conflicting. In the first sentence, it allows myself or the city manager to determine the appropriate size on a case-by-case basis. But in the, that referenced sentence, you're restricting the size. So that sentence was not in the original ordinance. Does that make sense?
And I guess that, that purpose of that sentence would be that if we have a sign ordinance that says this is as large a sign as you'd get if it's on a permanent basis, that if it's a temporary sign, it shouldn't be any larger than you'd get if it was a permanent sign. If we want to eliminate that, then a temporary sign could be larger than a permanent sign subject to the discretion of the planning director or city manager.
Other than that, I think it's kind of self-explanatory.
So if you have any questions.
Anyone in the audience or council have a question for Amanda? Anyone care to entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Call for a vote, please.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We're introducing.
You're, you're, you're.
I make, I make a motion to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance amending chapter seven of title line of the municipal code to expand the definition of and establish guidelines for temporary signs.
Thank you.
Can you second that?
I'll still second that. Well said.
All ayes.
Okay, item number 11 has been pulled. Item number 12.
Yes, item number 12 is an ordinance amending the municipal code to revise the powers and duties of the city manager and the fire chief. Essentially, this is a proposal to change the reporting structure wherein currently the fire chief reports to the city council. This would revise that so that the fire chief is like all other department heads in the city, reporting to the city manager. Avalon is unique in that the code calls for a separation that's in place currently. It is consistent with the prior arrangement where the fire chief was also the city manager. The fire chief is no longer also the city manager. And so it is recommended that we streamline the code and make it consistent so that all department heads report to the city manager's office. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Anyone in the audience have a question? Council?
I'll move staff for a recommendation.
Do we have a second?
We have three. Introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance amending the city of Avalon's municipal code to revise the powers and duties of the city manager and the fire, and the chief of the fire department.
I'll second Mr. Morrow's revised motion.
Call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
If we could have just a clarification on the previous ordinance, there was a discussion about the typo that was in there when the council enacted or introduced that ordinance. Did you want that sentence taken out as a typo or not? The one that said that the signs can be no longer, no larger than the permanent.
Have it removed, yes.
Okay. Good. The typo is corrected.
Item number 13 is the consideration of an award for contract for the Joe Machado Field Concession Stand project. I know that our recreation coordinator, Jen Remro, is with us this evening and she would be happy to provide you with a succinct and brief summary as to where this stands for your discussion and consideration. Jen?
Is Jordan all right? Is Jordan okay?
Jordan's fine.
Is he on fire? Jordan, you all right?
You have to speak into your mic.
Yes, so we put the contract for the Joe Machado concession stand out to bid. And we have, have one bidder. And we are recommending that you award the contract to that bidder. We've met with them several times to review their bid. And we would just like guidance. So just to give clarification on what the bid actually is, the original amount that the city council allotted for this project back in, last year in September, was $50,000 for the project. And that was based at the time on the estimate that we felt that the equipment that we needed to have to open the building would be, as well as some, the fixtures and construction work we thought at the time that the building would need. Because of a number of things, the price, the bid that we received is much higher than that. That's mainly, well, that's for several reasons. We will need a grease interceptor, which is a few thousand dollars for the size of unit that we'll need for this building. And then just the infrastructure work for the building because the plans that are approved by the health department require certain things to be moved or changed that aren't currently in place. Basically, adding new walls and structures, adding proper ventilation and redoing the roof for that, relocating the drainage in the floors, and adding new electrical and making sure that the sprinkler system is up to code, and adding hot water in the restrooms to be health department approved. So for all of that work, the bid that we received is 177,476? No. Six, 13918. So from 50,000 to 13918. Then we're also recommending an addendum to the, or a change order to the contract if awarded. And that would be for the contractor to get the rest of the equipment needed. We have some equipment and we're recommending that the contractor, rather than the city, provide the additional equipment. That would be so that there's not any surprises or a need for further change orders as the process goes along. That equipment for the change order that's requested is $15,045. So for all of that, plus contingency amount, plus our estimate for any sprinkler work that may be needed, we're asking that the council, or recommending that the council consider a total price not to exceed $177,478. Yeah.
Is that ouch with a capital O?
It's a big O.
Anyone in the audience have any questions for Jen? Counsel, questions for Jen? Okay, discussion.
Just march to Jen.
Come on up to the podium there, Marge.
I've had this thought and I don't know, I haven't done any research or anything, but what if we did something like a food truck? And just got the food truck that's all ready to go and drove it up there and put it in there permanently and it has its own everything, infrastructure and whatever. I mean, a food truck was an idea. And I haven't done any research to give that to, any information to you, but, I mean, it'd be a lot less than $170,000. Just a thought.
Good thought. Jen, how much of this change from a staff guesstimate of 50 grand to almost 200 grand is a result, direct result of requirements of the LA County Health Department?
I would say that some of it is. I don't know, I know that this is a big point of contention. However, I, under LA County Health Department regulations, there's not much you can do between a vending machine and a full commercial kitchen. There's not a lot of wiggle room in between. So in that way, yes, definitely there is a lot. However, if you look at our actual plans, I don't know how much, with any other health department, I don't know how much more we can scale the project down. For example, they already gave us a variance, which took a couple of months to get, but other than time, you know, they gave us a variance for the amount of shelving that we needed. It's really, unless you don't want the scope to be what it is currently, there's not that much that you can scale back. I mean, you're going to have to put a new electrical, it has to be up to code and we want to do everything proper. So you're going to have to put a new electrical and plumbing. You're going to have to put in new hot water heaters. You're going to have to put in propane service and a propane pad. You're going to have to put in a grease interceptor. You're going to have to put in proper ventilation and a hood. And you're going to have to have the recirculating air system. You're going to have to do all of those things regardless of what health department approves us. The amount of stainless steel counters or the amount of sinks, I don't know how much that can change. There's not a lot of frivolity because it's such a small building already.
I think that's the concern. It is such a small building. How do you spend $177,000? I mean, it's, it's like you've got Volkswagen and you've got a Porsche.
Right.
And it sounds like we're leaning heavily towards the Porsche, when I think the Volkswagen's, I mean, I like the idea about the food truck. I mean, something like that for, I mean, we've had propane barbecues up there. The school this year for football did, I think they cooked the food at the school and brought it up there in steam trays and things like that. It seems like so much of an overkill and I don't see us getting that large of a revenue stream to help ever pay for any of this stuff. I mean, personally. And I think we have the agreement. It's, and.
I mean, yeah, and I guess that just goes back to the scope of what you would like to see currently under LA County Health Department. I don't know how much wiggle room other health departments like Long Beach have with what they require, but if you want to cook a hamburger, you can't just throw it on a barbecue. I mean, it has to be separate from the public. It has to be in, and I don't know, I guess.
One of the examples is we, for the Spring Fest, you went out and bought the triple sinks that we needed for the outdoor food. I walk by a farmer's market in Long Beach every couple of months when I'm over there. They've got no triple sinks. They've got no hot water. I mean, it's like, so there is a difference between Long Beach and LA.
Oh, there is, yeah.
I'm just wondering what we would save if we explored the option of contracting our health services out to Long Beach. I think they're closer. I think they're not quite as bureaucratic. I think they might be a little more, quote, flexible.
And there's a, in our, we can discuss that more. Or we also have the contractor who bid on the project, as well as Dennis Gage, who's helped me in the management of this project thus far. If you want to ask about, any questions about the construction or where the money's really going or that kind of thing.
Dave, come on up.
Jen, but we've already paid for the plans to go through the plan check for the county, correct?
The plan check is complete. They can come over as soon as it's done and inspect it and give us the A-OK to open immediately as soon as the work gets done. So we're, yeah, we're, we're done with them until the final check.
That's already paid and cleared and that we have the go-ahead with LA County at this time, correct?
Correct.
It's time to bite the bullet.
It's not time to bite the bullet. We don't have the money to bite the bullet.
Yeah.
My, my argument to this is that we have been trying to do this since I have been on the city council. We kept pushing it off, we kept pushing it off, we kept pushing it off. And every time we push it off, the cost goes up. At some point, we have to decide, are we going to do something that's right and bite the bullet and have a facility that is done correctly? Or do we keep doing things in this town piecemeal? Everything is always, let's put this together, let's put this together, let's try to put this together, let's fix this with this. At some point, those paperclips break. And we need to get this done. I, it's just the frustration that I have in that this came to us on a previous council and the island company said, no, hold off. We want to give you, well, we're going to donate 10 and a half acres across the street to you that you can do something with and do playing fields. And at that meeting, they stopped the vote. So we put it off. And here we are, still discussing, trying to get this done. This project needs to be done.
Yeah, I agree.
We went, first it started with the restrooms and having to use portable restrooms. And then the community coming and complaining because we were using portable restrooms. Well, we couldn't make the decision of going ahead and getting the restrooms. When we tried to go get the, when we finally decided to vote on the building, we buy the building, we go over town to get our building, to find out that the company has filed bankruptcy. And out of the goodness of their heart, they opened the gate so we can get the building off their, off their lot. At some point, this has to be done. I, I just, I just get frustrated in that we expect the citizens of Avalon to live with subpar products. We have so little playing fields, entertainment space. We need to get it done.
We need to take the lead.
Yeah.
We need to set an example.
We expect everybody else in this community to get it done. We have to be the example. We need to get this done.
But through the actions of prior councils, we're looking at a $1.7 million deficit this year. Is this the year to go out and blow another 120,000?
I, I don't, I don't see it as blowing another 120,000. I see it as investing $120,000 into this community. And I don't, and I don't see that Joe Machado has to be a, that we're going to get that money back as revenue. This is one of the few areas in this town that this public, that the public has to use. And so we should make those areas prime. We should make those places that people want to go.
So how do you fund it?
We find a way of doing it. We find a way, if we have to cut somewhere to do it, then we do it.
I agree.
Okay, let's go. Find a way to fund it and then take, take the vote.
But as, but as we take that time trying to find that, the cost is going to go back up.
Let's get Dave's insight here for a minute on, on this project.
Yeah, thanks. Dave Thompson, 110 Chimes. I don't think the total cost will be as high as 170. I think Jen's got some contingency in there, which we're probably not going to get to. It's a small building, but it's, it's packed. It's just like the Blue Water Grill. It's got everything in it that the Blue Water Grill has. It's just that it's in a tighter space. And, you know, commercial kitchens are about the most expensive thing you can fund. As far as the pricing goes, at the time, there was another bid that I was expecting to have come in against me. So I did not just, you know, jump in there and just say, oh, I'm going to, you know, fluff it up. It isn't. There isn't a lot of profit here. There's a lot of overhead. It's bonded, it's prevailing wage. The two, two plumbing bids, they were both within a couple of thousand dollars of each other. The electrical bids were within a couple of thousand dollars. And the other part of this is you are getting this, we have to make a place for the propane tanks and we have to run lines, one to the restroom and one to the kitchen. So everything that's in there has to be stripped out and redone. All the electrical, all the plumbing, nothing is in the right locations. And again, you've got this plan that's been approved by the health department. So you're kind of confined with what they're going to want to see. And in regard to the food truck, the only deal is that, and here you're going to have like a big freezer, you're going to have a lot more space than you're ever going to have in a, in a truck. I mean, you're going to be double or triple the capacity for everything you're doing. And that, you know, again, it's, it's just a high dollar kind of an item. And I know that the, the buildings themselves were supposed to come with, with more than what they ended up having. But in this situation, we have to pretty much take everything down to the bare bones and start over. You know, all the plumbing, all the electrical. So it's, it's as if it was a shell. It's not like we're going in there and just adding some kitchen equipment. The floor is epoxy, the coat is stainless everywhere. So, yeah, I would, you know, I would be happy to. everywhere. So, yeah, I would, you know, I would be happy to have this price be lower, but honestly, there wouldn't be any way for me to, to do it any lower. You know, I've already kind of gotten to that point, so. In any case, you have any other questions about anything specifically?
Any other questions? For Dave?
Thanks.
Want me to make a motion?
I just had a curious comment that might help. Has anybody looked into possible donations or fundraisers to offset some of the costs? So if it is approved, and you go forward with it, since it is community-based, let's get the community involved. Let's get some people outside the community who might have some funds that'd be willing to donate towards our community to give us these improvements, and help us with these improvements, and be able to then take all revenues brought in from donations, even maybe if somebody can donate equipment, but donations and fundraisers to reimburse the city for their expenditures for this to help offset the costs, considering the fact that we are having financial, you know, budget issues right now, and bring in other resources to assist in this, because I agree, it is very important that we do improve the community, give the kids a place to go, and maybe even utilize it as a source for outside the community to come over and now spend your money, stay for a weekend, and utilize our field. Spend your money here and have fun here, especially in the off-season when we've got great weather, but nothing else really anybody wants to do. So find other ways to bring money in. I don't know of any off the top of my head, but maybe somebody else smarter than me does, and might be able to find resources for that, and reimburse the city in that respect.
Good. Thank you, Ann.
Can I make a motion? We can talk about it anyway. Here's a motion. Let's award the contract to Dave Thompson Construction for the Joe Machado Field Concession Stand project. Authorize a change order to encompass the equipment in the scope of work, and encourage the different leagues and groups to do fundraisers to reimburse the city as much as they can.
I'll second.
Very noble, but I don't think we're going to get a lot out of that.
I know.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Call for a vote.
We have three eyes, Moro Ponce Hernandez, two nose Kennedy, and Olson.
I'd like to comment that I'm not against the project, but in today's financial environment, I don't know that that's the best wise expenditure of money. So on that note.
I concur.
Can't wait to have a burger there, though.
Hey.
Most used facility in the city. Make it nice. It should be nice. It's been bouncing around here too long.
All right, city managers report.
Yes, I would like to acknowledge Betty Jo Garcia, who has 30 years of service with the City of Avalon.
Cool.
Hey.
And she started when she was one.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Scott?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay, counsel?
Ole and I attended the Contract Cities Meeting last week, two weeks ago, at the Queen Mary, and we're lobbying greatly to have the Contract Cities Fall Conference here in Avalon. So it looks like we might do that.
Hopefully, that'll be a good thing. And at that same weekend, I attended the Avalon High School Faith CIF semifinal football game, and unfortunately, want to report that Avalon did not prevail. The final score was 36 to 28. Did a heck of a job, though. The guys were driving with the last possession, but unfortunately, had a fumble. They would have won the league if they would have won against Faith, because the next weekend, when Faith played, team they played, they just blew them out. So good luck, Earl, and good luck next year, because we only graduated two seniors, so that's going to be pretty cool next year.
Ralph?
City manager and I went over town to CRNR and look at their facility, and get a tour. Very impressive place. I'd never been there before. I know some of you have. We talked about a lot of things, and there's a lot of potential that they have that we can take advantage of in the future. So it was well worth the time, and going over there and speaking to them. Class act. That's it.
Excellent, thank you. I would like to bring up one thing, illegal dumping. There has been a.
In Avalon?
In Avalon. There has been a huge run on illegal dumping in a variety of locations around town. I know I'm preaching to the choir to actually try to convince those that are doing it not to do it, but I'd like to get the community to be vigilant, keeping an eye out for it, and to report it, because it's getting out of control, and it's out of hand, and it's everything from just golf carts abandoned on, in a red zone in front of a fire hydrant that sits here for three weeks, to golf cart parts, to stereos, to TVs, to couches in the center of the street. It's just not acceptable. So let's do what we can to battle that one. Mr. Kennedy?
Well, I was just wondering, is the community having the aid hitting for the new facility that they can do like three visits in?
Yeah, the three hour, large item pickups?
But I know they're dumping, island company has to pay for all of the people that are coming from out of Los Cintas and dumping air, and so they're like, if it didn't distribute it, or people do all that, if it was called in an appointment, they will pick it up.
I, I know that, I know that there was an education campaign that went out, and.
It didn't, it didn't hit, because I had somebody ask me when the next large item pickup is. I said, well, you can call them.
Let's, let's put a reminder out to CRNR to kind of focus on that one. I know, I know that there's been a few hotspots around town that, you know, the one back here, for example, is, is a frequent one, but now, I mean, it's, any curbside, any public city trash can area, I mean, it's, you, you put up a trash can to help people out, and then they think that that's the spot to drop, you know, three barbecues and four spare tires and the top to a golf cart. And.
Would it possibly be easier to work with CRNR to have once, like, once a month pickup? Where on this day, every month, we will come by, and you put your item out, we will come by and pick it up?
And that's the way they used to do it? Now, all you have to do is call, and they'll come get it on demand?
They'll get it then.
Yeah, I know, because we got it in the, in the paperwork, but apparently, that's not working either, because nobody wants to call. But if they do have it where maybe if.
I don't, I think it's more that people don't know that they can call.
Yeah, people call.
They just don't want to?
Yeah. They're, they're just not aware that.
Because I know I have to walk around it every day down my street, so.
I think it's done on Wednesday, and you have to call 24-hour notice prior to your pickup.
Right.
You give them your address, and on Wednesday is the day they usually come around and get it.
Okay, so you don't think if they had just a set day, if, if everybody knew that on Monday, the first Monday of every month, you put your items out, we'll come pick them up, you don't have to worry about calling, do you think that would be easier? Or if an item's sitting out there, it's going to get picked up? So even if it is, you know, at least once a month, it gets cleaned up?
We, we have a contractual arrangement as to how that works, and, and we will pursue the current arrangement.
Well, but then there are some things like abandoned golf carts, you know, that's not on their list of things to pick up anyway, so.
That's not, and actually.
My, my point is, is that there's some, some things that are being ditched on the side of the road, and I think that they'll be ditched on the side of the road regardless what process we have in play with CRNR. So I think it's our responsibility as, you know, stewards and citizens of the community to report those that are doing it, because it's obvious.
So two things. So we will, three things. We will work with CRNR on the public education component of it. I will also volunteer Jordan Monroe to help get an article into the paper about this as well. And then finally, in January.
He's way in the back.
Okay. In January, we're likely to come back to you with a recommendation for a impound lot, which will address the other issue. And Audra and Captain Federal are working on that currently, and I'm pleased that they're making some headway in an over town impound lot concept.
Awesome.
And could, could you also query CRNR what it would cost to swap one of the random pickups for a one annual large item pickup day, like the good old days?
Sure, we, we can talk to them about what would be required. So, so you're just suggesting having an annual.
Have one annual large item pickup, and we reduce the residential amount to two.
Happy to talk to them about that.
Jen?
And then I just wanted to let you know, so city staff and island company staff are, have also been talking about this issue as well. I know that city staff and island company are pursuing putting in cameras, unfortunately. That's what we're trying to resort to, so that at places of high dumping, like Las Casitas and TruMont Hall and other locations, so hopefully deterring some of it as well. So.
Awesome. Thanks, Jen.
And I just got some information about the large item pickups that the residents can schedule. They can be on, picked up on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
There you go.
Thank you, Cheryl.
All righty. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, we're adjourned.